And the roll call of trustees is that Michael Beers is not going to be attending tonight, and I think that's it. And then, oh Elliot, trustee Dugger, we believe is on his way, so hopefully he'll walk in at some point shortly. And so, do you have the roll call?
Right.
Okay. So if we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, and now we're on to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there a request from any trustee to make any kind of modification to the agenda as it's been set? Seeing heads shaking, no, then we'll go ahead and move forward following the agenda that's in the packet. The next item is item number four, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from October 23rd. They're found beginning on page five. Is there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, and I think that trustee Wake was indicating she's going to move to approve the minutes, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, is there a second? Second by trustee Kendall. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the regular meeting from October 23rd, 2018, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we come to item number 5A, which is public comment on non-agenda items. So if anyone in the public has any kind of comment they'd like to make to alert the board to anything that is of concern, or anything you want us to know about the district, this is the time to make those comments on non-agenda items. We ask individuals who want to make public comment to spell their first or last name if it has an unusual spelling, and if you represent a group, identify that group, and other than that, we just ask if you limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, that was a long speech for, you know, public comment on non-agenda items. Hopefully we'll have some on agenda items. Now we come to the student, trustee reports 6A. So if you want to start at that end of the table with Willard, and just identify yourself and let us know what's going on at the school.
All right. Hi, I'm Wera Oderman. So I think that's how I start, right? So first things first, we had our neighborhood cleanup this past, I think it was last week or the week before that. This is when we go around the neighborhood and we clean up all the garbage that we see. It was actually a lot less this time, I believe, which is really nice. A few people thanked us, which was pretty neat, so that was fun. We had a, the university put on a play for us, which was Merlin and Morgana. They do a play every year for us, and it was really interesting and fun. We just had our first spirit week in a while. Monday was duo day, Tuesday was formal day, Wednesday was Halloween, Thursday was, ah, I brought it down somewhere, but, and then Friday was red and black day for our school colors. The octopus is coming, he's a chess player, famous chess player, and that's gonna be really fun. We have 12 students who are graduating next, on Thursday actually, which is really exciting, graduation coming up. We have a talent show coming up, which will be, I think auditions are on December 6th or 8th, December 8th, yeah, at Willard, and I believe the other schools have their auditions too. We have a whole bunch of after-school clubs that just happened. So we have D and D on Mondays, or Tuesdays, which is really interesting. I've watched once in a while as I'm doing the paper. We have rock climbing on Mondays, where a flagship takes the students over to a rock climbing place, and they, you know, do the rock climbing and stuff. We have gladiators also on Mondays, which is a kind of like live-action role-playing event, that happens near Hellgate, so they all kind of walk over and, or take the car. And we also have a songwriting club, where two people who are in a band come in and they teach us how to write songs and the structure of the songs. Our trimester is ending on the 20th, and we'll be back on the 27th. We now have weekly community meetings, so every Wednesday we meet and we present student talents, like singing or art, and present them to the entire school, and show off their amazing talents. The Willard Wire is coming out with their paper on Monday, I believe, and will be distributing on Tuesday or Wednesday. And the construction is going really well. I believe we're gonna be moving in next trimester, and it's just a stunning building. So yeah, lots going on.
Thanks, it does sound like a lot of good things are going on at Willard, and I love driving by the school and seeing the progress made on the new building, so, and moving right along.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sophia Richter, I'll be filling in for Miles Miller who couldn't make it today, so I'll just be kind of reading his notes. So first of all, October was a very successful month for Hellgate. Regarding the general student population, there is still some controversy regarding the yellow lines policy enforced by the administration. This policy places yellow barrier lines throughout the school, keeping students within certain areas during lunch, and many students are upset about this because it is a much smaller area for lunch than what we're used to. And so student government is currently drafting compromises that will be proposed to the principal, but currently no changes have been made yet. Regarding construction, it will finish up in December, so student government is planning a school-wide party for when the new area opens. And student government also now has a new bulletin board set up in the staircase to give students an organized layout of the monthly schedule and increase cooperation with the student body. As for sports and activities, Hellgate activities are doing very well. Our football team finally won its first game since 2012, and so our football players have obviously put in a lot of hard work in order to raise the program from where it was before, and it clearly has paid off. Our cross-country team is very strong, our boys, our cross-country team pulled off a second-place win at State, which they weren't supposed to get, and the girls' cross-country team did even better, they won State with over a 20-point lead over Bozeman, which had an 11-year winning streak. Our boys' soccer team took second place to Bozeman High School, and the girls' soccer team took sixth place at State. We also have many clubs, so I'll just give a quick update on a couple of them. Our SAVE Club, which stands for Students Against Violating the Environment, has been hosting a school-wide no-buy-November campaign in order to persuade students to not buy new items and instead buy used ones or recycle. Our BPA Club, which is Business Professionals of America, is running an apple cider fundraiser to raise money for the Special Olympics, and recently Hellgate has started a new club called Vital Voices, where students stand up against sexual misconduct.
Okay. My name is Andrew Garnier, and I'm representing Big Sky as the member from student government. And so this past month, a few things for academics that have been happening, we started an IB mural that's been painting, being painted on the side of the school, or I guess near it, on a trailer, which is going really well, and the students that are painting that are in the art program at Big Sky, and so that's going really well, it's almost finished as well. For seniors, mentor and advisor contracts for their senior projects are kind of being turned in, so a lot of senior project and senior paper things have been going on just recently. And so also with that is a lot of IB testing requirements have been, I guess, due, like as far as payments and stuff, so many people that'll be taking the IB tests at Big Sky will be, will soon be doing so because they just paid their payments for that. And then as well as relating to IB, there's a lot of IA papers relating to the IB program that are going to begin, and mostly relating to that is just the main core subjects that we have at Big Sky is what that IB, IA entails. As far as sports go, we have fall banquets that are getting underway. For a lot of sports, our sports teams did really well this year. Our girls' soccer team took second at State, so they already had their banquet, and they did really well this year, so it was really good to see them kind of show up at State this year. And then this, upcoming this week is winter sports tryouts and just the beginning of all winter sports, and that'll start Thursday for tryouts for all those sports that are involved in during the wintertime. As far as extracurriculars go, Key Club, a lot of things happened on Halloween for us, specifically Key Club did a trick-or-treating with the daycare kids from across the street, and so that went really well. During lunch, the little tots came in and did a little trick-or-treating around the school, so that was really cute and really good to see them out there. We also had a Halloween dance for the first time in, I think, over 10 years this year, and that went really well. Student government gained a lot of funds by putting that on, and it was, it was a great way for a lot of different clubs and stuff to, I guess, have their input in this dance, and they did a lot of, I guess, the dance was obviously the main focus of it, but there was a lot of, I guess, extra things that you could do with the dance that made it a really good event for us. And then along with that, the International Club had their celebration for Dia de los Muertos, and that went really well for them. I think they're planning a few trips here in the near future, so that celebration, I think, helped a lot with, I guess, getting them some funds for their upcoming trips. NUN position papers were due for countries, so those related to Model UN, and I think the Model UN club, or whatever it is called, is, they're doing, going on a field trip pretty soon here to, it might be the university, but just relating to their position papers that they wrote. And then as well as that, NHS for the National Honor Society, all last month started their cleanup crew kind of deal that they've got going there, where they have members of NHS clean up the parking lot and around the school during lunch, just right after, just to make sure that the school's looking extra clean. And then this weekend, the newspaper comes out, that's for the Big Sky Sun Journal, and so that comes out this Saturday, and then I guess we'll distribute this upcoming Monday, so really excited about that. And I think that's all we have as far as Big Sky goes.
And just to say, before we get to Madison, there's the VP Chair, and you did mention sports banquets.
Yeah. So our Sealy Lake student trustees will not be presenting tonight, as they have their fall awards banquet tonight, their activities banquet, and both of the trustees are engaged in that, so we'll hear from them next month.
And then on to Sentinel.
All right, good evening. While we are in full swing of the fall semester, Sentinel continues to excel in athletics, academics, and arts. Most fall sports came to an end this month as the winter sports season begins. Boys and girls soccer both competed at the state competition in Helena on October 18th, with boys playing the playoffs against senior Skyview and Capital, and girls advancing to the semifinals competition against Big Sky. Seniors Quinn Peacock and Asley Allen made the All-State roster, and Brittany Berman and Reese Meyer made All-Conference. Cross-country also competed in the state competition, with boys taking fifth overall and girls placing eighth. Hunter McKay took 14th and earned an All-State title. Cross-country and soccer finished successful seasons with end-of-season banquets, and volleyball beat Big Sky at a crosstown game on the 16th, and played against Hellgate last week in the playoffs game. Our Special Olympians competed last week at the state basketball competition in Helena, and the tournament drew a crowd of over 1,000 athletes, families, chaperones, and coaches, so we would like to say congratulations to our Spartan athletes. Sentinel DAKA has already started to prepare for the competition in February, as states took the, as students took the state qualifying test this past week. DAKA also collected 929 food items to be donated to the Sentinel Family Resource Center. Speech and debate officially began at the annual kickoff tournament in Kalispell, with 70 students competing all day on November 3rd and earning a third-place finish in AA sweepstakes. This weekend Sentinel also hosts the Missoula Regional Invitational Tournament, and Sentinel pulled off a stunning third-place win, with 20 students placing top eight in their individual events. Our top placers included Stephen Clement, who was first in dramatic interpretation, Tegan Scaper and Oliver Chin, first in public-form debate, Ellen Lauren and Kellen Moore, second in public-form debate, Peyton Risca and Jared Rosenquist, second in duo interpretation, Matty Braun, third in legislative debate, Clara Commons, fourth in original oratory, Julie Quackenbush, fourth in informative speaking, and Jack Durk and Daisy Colina, fourth in novice policy debate. We would like to show our appreciation for our speech and debate coaches, Meredith Britt and Cassidy Brooks, who successfully coordinated the two-day tournament with AA and ABC schools from all around western Montana. Our next competition will be December 7th in Bozeman. Model United Nations will be competing at the University of Montana next week, where Sentinel students will collaborate with students from schools across Montana to draft resolutions and debate current events. Brain Bowl is also competing today in Frenchtown for the first tournament of the season. We will report on the results at next month's meeting. Sentinel hosted the AA Choir Festival this week, and students participated in AA Band Festival last month. The Sentinel Drama Department will be performing "It's a Wonderful Life" Thursday, November 29th through Saturday, December 1st at 7:30 PM. The play is a love story and a celebration of Christmas. As our auditorium is currently under construction, the show will be performed in the Hellgate Auditorium, and tickets will be sold at the door for $6. This weekend Sentinel student government will be hosting the annual fireside dance, and in conjunction with the dance, student government has also led a coat drive and food drive for the Missoula Food Bank. Sentinel would like to extend well wishes for the coming holiday season. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks for great reports, and as I mentioned at each meeting, we know your students, it's a school night, so you're welcome to stay for as long as you want for the meeting, but if you need to get going because there's other things going on, feel free to leave whenever you want to. I wanted to say, bring back to your school special thanks, especially to Willard, Hellgate, and Sentinel, since I'm in those buildings off and on, so the construction poses a bit of a challenge, and so thank you for your patience as students, and please pass along to your fellow students. And then Big Sky's about to come up with some remodels shortly, so, anyway, thank you so much. And then we'll move on to announcements from the superintendent.
Thank you, and I'd like to start tonight by taking a little personal privilege, actually. As many of you know, I announced today to the Board of Trustees my intent to retire on June 30th, and I would just like to say, you know, I'm fond of telling people that I started in Missoula County Public Schools in 1965, which is when I began first grade at Roosevelt School in Mrs. Jean Salbowski's class. And the past 54 years have been a great run, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity that I've had. I started teaching in the district in the 1980-81 school year, and as I reflected on that, a couple of things struck me. Jimmy Carter was president, to put it in perspective, and it won't surprise many of you to know that I actually have a copy of the salary schedule from the year I began in the district. The starting salary was $11,431, and the top salary in the district at that time was $24,474, so it's nice to see we've improved that a little bit over the years. But the 39 years that I've had in the district have truly been remarkable, and I've been mentored by a great staff, classified, certified, and administrative staff over the years, and, you know, they've been a tremendous support and have allowed me to grow personally and professionally, and I'll be forever grateful. You know, I've been so fortunate also to have been able to work my entire career in a community that means so much to me as a native Missoulian, and as a product of this school system, I take great pride in the quality education that I believe I received and that my own children received. And as I reflect on pending retirement, I can't help but think that we as a district are really well-positioned right now. I hope you recognize how fortunate we are to have incredible staff in this district who value what the students bring to the table each and every day, and work so diligently to meet their needs, to provide for them high-quality experience, guaranteed and viable curriculum, and really to meet them where they are and support them where they need to be supported. And my experience with the students and families in the district has certainly shaped who I am today, and that experience with staff has been simply outstanding. And I would certainly be remiss if I didn't express my appreciation to you as the Board of Trustees for the confidence you've had in me and the support you've shown me these four years as superintendent. This has been truly a wonderful experience, and as I approach this decision, it's tough to know when it's the right time. But with regard to the bond projects, we've hired our 18th and final set of contractors, that's a significant hurdle, and I contemplate some of the projects that we have coming, and I know it's time for us to consider a new five-year strategic plan, and I think it's important for new leadership to have an opportunity to help inform that plan and to then actually move forward with implementing it. So I'm grateful to each and every one of you for all that you have given to the district. I appreciate the administrative team with whom I've had the great pleasure of working, certainly an incredible teaching and classified staff that serve our students each and every day, and I look forward to the next seven months. I'm sure June 30th will arrive much more quickly than I would like it to, but I think that the time is right, and so I appreciate the opportunities, but I wanted to afford the Board the opportunity to have the time you need to determine how you go about selecting a new superintendent and go through the process of filling that position. So, thank you all. I guess I have a couple other announcements, too. Right. I did want to recognize that last week was parent-teacher conferences, and again, our staff does such tremendous work, meeting with the parents, and especially in the fall, at such a critical time, not only to have an opportunity to talk about students' academic achievement, but truly partner with parents and help craft plans to help those students be successful for the remainder of the year. It also was a significant time in that we opened Jeanette Rankin's school on Monday, and kudos to that staff and to Chris Stevens and to all throughout the district, from Burleigh and the holding team, et cetera, to make that happen. It's a remarkable facility, and the transition couldn't have happened more smoothly. We also opened the new office and reception area at both Sentinel and at Hawthorne, and again, as we work to implement not only the bond projects but safety and security measures for our staff, these are critical developments. As was referenced, Willard will hold its first graduation assembly of the year Thursday at 9:30. We have trustee visits also scheduled for Thursday morning to three elementary schools. We'll go to Lewis and Clark at 8:30, Paxton at 9:30, and Rattlesnake at 10:30. And Wednesday, November 23rd through Friday, or excuse me, Wednesday, November 21st through Friday, November 23rd will be non-scheduled days for students in observance of Thanksgiving, and students will return to class on Monday, the 26th. With that, I'll conclude my superintendent's report.
Thanks. And now we come to 6C, which is announcement from trustees. Are there any announcements from trustees? Well, I have one, and I'm gonna read from it, so I don't get sad, but anyway. I just wanted Mark, or Superintendent Thane, to know that I believe I speak on behalf of all the trustees in saying that it's been a privilege to work with Mark as our superintendent. Mark has brought significant personal commitment and professionalism as superintendent to make sure that every student in MCPS succeeds. When you go on school visits with him, there are students coming up that he was their teacher to, who are now in high school, there are teachers that he taught with, it's remarkable the connections he has had and continues to have with students and staff in the schools. His 39 years of experience in the district have allowed him the ability to understand and navigate the complexity of our school district. It is a big business, it's one of the largest employers of anyone in the city of Missoula. And because of that experience, it culminated in his stewardship as superintendent in overseeing both the implementation of the bond, in other words, getting the bond passed, which Mark used tireless efforts to make sure that it was successful for the benefit of all our students and staff, and then continued with that stewardship to make sure that the bond projects were implemented thoughtfully, in a manner that, you know, was protective of the district's money, but made sure that students and staff had what they needed in each building. Mark is really everything a superintendent should be. He's a thoughtful listener, he's a capable leader, and he's a tireless advocate for public education. He remains active both at the state level and local level, both in terms of advocating for public education, as well as having a wonderful relationship with staff during negotiation periods and things that are truly important to making sure that our district moves forward. He was truly deserving of being awarded the Western Montana Superintendent of the Year Award, and I was happy that Diane and I, Vice Chair and Chair, and Ann as Vice Chair, were there when he was awarded that award, and we look forward to making the remainder of your year incredibly successful, so thank you too. Any other comments?
I see.
Pardon? I know, well, I'm only, I'm only, I wanted to make sure that we were on C if there were any other trustee comments. And then D is report from the Montana Conference of Educational Leadership, which took place in Missoula in October, and Ann was the outgoing president, so she's got a report for us.
The 37th Montana Conference on Educational Leadership took place this year on October 18th and 19th at the Hilton Garden Inn here in Missoula. The opening began at 8:00 AM with a flag ceremony, and I don't know the troop member's name, but they did the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Native American dancers were also there, and a performance by them with the Native American flag song. Awards were given out to the outstanding business official. 14 fellow board members across the state received the Marvin Hines Award, given out to the board members with 96 hours of training through the MTSBA School Board Academy. 13 school boards from across the state were awarded the Golden Gavel Award, which is attained when an entire school board attains certification of the 96 hours. Nine superintendents, including our superintendent, Mr. Thane, were present representing their respective regions as Superintendent of the Year. Out of those nine, one was chosen as the Montana State Superintendent of the Year, which went to Dr. Rob Watson, Superintendent of Bozeman Public Schools. There were numerous workshops for board members to attend to broaden their professional development. It was a packed platform for our learning benefit. At the beginning of the day on October 19th, MTSBA held its annual meeting. As you may recall, at the meeting last year, there wasn't a quorum, so last year's business was handled via email vote. This year, we weren't sure until the meeting began if we would have a quorum. We did and had a three-hour productive discussion of resolutions that were brought forward from the Delegate Assembly this past June, all of which passed. If you would care to review the portion, this portion of the conference, please reach out to me, and I will provide you with the necessary information. I close the annual meeting with the following. I would like to personally thank you all for attending this year's MTSBA annual meeting. It is important to hear different perspectives on issues that concern us all regarding the quality of education we provide our students. Entering our legislative year with a clear picture of what we want under the state constitution for good quality education for our children is vital. This year, in some ways, to me, seems too long, but for most, for the most part, way too short. I've learned a lot about what it is, what is, a lot about what is by others, as well as myself, expected of a school board member and an MTSBA board member. We as board members have a lot in common with the pencil. I chuckled when I thought about it, so I don't mind if you chuckle as well. Pencils and school boards, who govern their respective public schools, make no distinction as to who uses them. Maybe you're asking why a pencil? The pencil was born in 1564, and 71 years later, in 1635, the first public school was born. The pencil and its years since 1564 hasn't struggled but thrived, while public schools and their boards have struggled with the ever-pressing questions of how can we improve? What can we do better? Who will be willing to step forward to serve? And so much more. The pencil is recognized as a useful tool for anyone, including an artist, an architect, an astronomer, a student, a carpenter, a plumber, electrician, and even a school board member. But a school board and its members? So what is a school board and its members? Like the pencil, we are all unsung heroes. Yes, I did say it, heroes. We are elected, and while there are a few districts that might pay $30 a meeting for a board member, most do not. We are all volunteers. We hope to get a thank you and a job well done once in a while, but usually you are provided with, glad it's you, not me, or why did you do that, or why would you ever want to be on a school board? But all in all... But all in all, like the pencil, we are very important individuals. We step forward when others step back, and we undertake this job because we feel it is vital to our students and their future. So, like the pencil, we have both been, I'm getting hot. We have both been around for some time and will be around for some time to come. Like the pencil, we can break, but as a board, we can mend. A broken pencil becomes two and is then stronger and used twice as long. A board and its members, when unified, stand strong and accomplish much. Pencils are as strong and resilient and school boards and its members are as well. Together, we both accomplish the impossible. In our future, we may participate in apprenticeship programs for our students and personal learning plans and so much more. Boards looking at what might best fit their students and what is above and beyond for a quality education they can provide. I wish the future of learning the best, and I envy those who will take that wondrous journey with their students. Like the pencil, I stand tall and resilient as a large school right next to a tall and resilient small school. To me, there is little difference because we are pencils standing together to be strong. So, let us all be a pencil and stand strong together during this next legislative session and beyond. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your leadership at the Montana School Boards Association. We really appreciate your years of leadership, and you still have one more year as the past president, we know.
Pardon me? Oh, yes.
Yes. You're not done yet.
As long as you approve me, I will stay on the board as a municipal director, even after my years.
Okay. Yeah. And so, now we move on to number seven. So, if any trustees feel like this is a pretty good break in the action, but if you want to stay longer, we would love to have you stay. And so, the consent agenda is an area on the agenda which allows the trustees to place items on the agenda where we're going to see them routinely, usually even monthly. So, there won't be a lot of board discussion. In fact, there won't be any as long as it's on the consent agenda. There'll be public comment, and then we will consider action on the items that are there. And the reason that we have it on the consent agenda is because it's pretty ordinary business. But if any single trustee would like to have it taken off the agenda, then they can ask to do so, and then we'll have a more robust discussion. So, tonight, the only item on the consent agenda, which is an elementary-only action item, I just double-checked, is to approve the list of student attendance agreements that is attached on page 16. This is the list of students who are residents of our school district who have requested to attend other school districts, and it requires approval by the board in order to do so. So, the recommendation is that the trustees approve the attached list of students requesting to attend other school districts. Is there a motion to approve the list of students identified in the student attendance agreements? Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Smith. As I indicated, there won't be any board discussion, but is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the attached list of students requesting to attend other school districts, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to 8A1, under Old Business, for Finance and Operations. It is to approve the second reading of a revision to Board Policy 3310, which is Student Discipline. And I don't know, Mark, if you want to just provide us?
Thank you. So, we've had fairly extensive discussion regarding this policy at a couple board meetings and have taken the last language that you recommended and have incorporated it into Board Policy 3310. It's printed twice in the packet. Beginning on page 17 is the red-lined version. Beginning on page 21, I asked Lenora to put together the clean copy so that it reads a little more fluidly. I believe that this summarizes well the discussion that we've had and incorporates the recommendations that you made at previous board meetings. And so, the recommendation is that this be approved as drafted and submitted for public comment.
And I'm just looking, the recommendation from the administration is to approve the revised policy. And so, it's a little bit off because usually we have a first reading and a second reading, but because we had a lot of input into this particular proposal to the revision to Board Policy 3310, this would actually be the third time we consider it in January on the 8th. And this will allow the public an opportunity to comment on what we consider to be the final language for the board policy before it's formally adopted. So, this would be to approve the second reading and with the anticipation that it would be approved for final adoption as one of our policies in January. Have I said that all right?
You did. And actually, I need to apologize because I actually had an error with regard to this agenda item. And at the last board meeting, I believe it was trustee Decker that made the motion, and it was actually to approve it with the recommended language changes. We then went back and made those language changes, and according to the minute, should have just put it out for public comment. We, and it was again my responsibility, I came back and thought that it should have been brought back to the board with those language changes. So, I did have Lenora post it for public comment, but it hasn't yet run its course.
Okay. Any questions about trustee Kendall?
Just a procedural question. If we were to get comments, how would we go about changing it if we wanted to do that? Would we go through a couple of different revisions again and postings and everything? We would kind of start over?
I don't think it would be considered starting over, but yes, if there were some significant, if someone noticed something significant that we didn't notice, then I believe the appropriate course of action is for us to take into consideration those recommendations and make a determination as a board as a whole, because our decisions are made by the board as a whole, whether or not we'd want to make further modifications based on what we hear, or whether we want to go forward with the language we propose. So, there's still an opportunity for the public to weigh in on any time we change our policies. Does that make?
Yes, that's very helpful. And also, will this be posted on the website so people will be able to find it easily? And how is this comment different from a regular public comment? Is it the same thing?
Normally, if we receive any public comment on policy changes, it's in written form, and it's included in the board packet. We, in the final reading, reference whether or not we've received any public comment. So, we'll apprise you and make sure that we draw it to your attention.
Trustee Decker?
But if anyone wanted to talk about it in person, they could come to the meeting and make a public comment at the time of the agenda item when it was being considered. And at that time, the board would also be able to say, yeah, we thought we were going to be voting to approve this. I'm not ready to do that now. Or, you know, that whole discussion could still happen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, public comment could be made at that time, too.
I guess the bottom line is, we would encourage folks, when there's a proposal or a change to our policies, we would really encourage anyone who's impacted by those policies to take the opportunity to look at them and see if there's something that, for some reason, we haven't noticed and bring it to our attention. But because we're operating under the Opens Meetings Act, we can always have those comments at the meeting itself. So... Any other comments or questions about the procedure? Then, is there a motion to approve the, I guess we'll call it, the second reading of the revision to Board Policy for Student Discipline and to authorize posting for public comment during the timeframe that's required by statute or by policy? And then, we will bring it back after we afford the opportunity for public comment at the January 8th school board meeting. Is there a move by trustee Kendall? Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Sturbe. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all those in favor of approving the policy for second reading and putting it out for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then, in a parallel manner, we move on to two, which is the second reading of revision to Board Policy 5224, which is Personal Conduct. And I believe this is in the same procedural posture as the earlier one because the board did make several recommendations for changes, which were then incorporated by legal counsel. So, is there any question before?
I would just say that the main comment on Board Policy 5224 was making sure that the language in the staff conduct policy was in alignment with that that we had in the student policy. So, we use the same language, and that's been incorporated, referenced on page 24 in the lined version, and then the clean copy of the policy begins on page 26. And the administration's recommendation is to approve this reading of the policy and submit again for public comment.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none. Then, the recommendation is that the trustees approve the second reading of the revision and authorize posting for public comment with the understanding that the trustees would approve the revised policy at the third reading on January 8th unless there's significant public comment, even though, as trustee Decker indicated, public comment at the evening of the meeting is equally acceptable. So, is there a motion to authorize it, or approve it for second reading and authorize it for public comment? Moved by trustee McDonald and seconded by trustee Sturbe, just because all the hands are going up that way. All, any board discussion on this one? Trustee Decker?
I noticed and wanted to thank the district's council for doing such a great job with language again, because another piece of this was that it before seemed to say that district employees shouldn't possess these things anywhere, right? If I remember. So, I just was reading, and I was like, oh, she put that in. She's so thorough. I appreciate that.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of approving the second reading of Board Policy 5224 and authorizing its posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now, we move on to New Business under Finance and Operations A1. And I don't know if Mark or Pat's going to take the lead on this, but this is a good agenda item to have.
Pat will take the lead, but I would just say that I'm excited that, as we completed our October enrollment counts, both the elementary district and the secondary district showed increases in enrollment. It matches what we've experienced the last several years. And again, the aggregate of the districts is an increase of about 150 students, and that's before we consider the early kindergarten enrollees that we also added. So, it creates some tension in the district in terms of class size, but it's a good problem to have as opposed to losing enrollment. So, Pat has the good news on the budget amendments that we are then qualified to consider.
All right. Thank you. So, as Mark mentioned, there's the opportunity for a budget amendment in both general funds. The first being the elementary district. On page 28, you'll see the proclamation, the resolution that is a proclamation of the need for a budget amendment. It outlines the amount of the budget amendment. Within the agenda background, you'll see the portion of that budget amendment that is direct state aid, and then the remaining portion would come from our reserves. When we adopted a budget amendment last time, and I want to say it was last year in our elementary district, we had pulled in just the part that was direct state aid, and here we're proposing the budget amendment for the full amount, which would include the portion that would come from reserves. The potential exists, well, not the potential, but the opportunity, I should say, exists in both districts for remittance of tax increment dollars from the city. And the state law really limits where those funds can be placed, and one place is within reserves. So, the timing is actually pretty good in the sense that we would have an opportunity to use the reserves in the form of the budget amendment and then replenish those reserves through the use of the TIF funds. So, that's something we'll talk about at a different time, but wanted to make the connection to the building reserves. The process would be that if approved, if the resolution's approved, then the board would sign the petition that's also attached to the agenda beginning on page 29. That petition is sent to the state superintendent of public instruction. And once approved, then we would put on the agenda the final resolution for budget amendment. And ideally, that would be the first meeting in December. That's...
Any questions for Pat or Mark? Trustee Lorenson and then trustee Smith?
I'm just looking at the numbers. And the amount of the increase for the high school seems disproportionately large compared to the increase in the number of students. And we only have 39 additional students, and yet, we're getting about 15,000 per student. Whereas in the elementary, I know the elementary's lower, but I thought the high school should come in around eight or 9,000 per student.
Yeah. So, we, the per A and B entitlement in the high school is greater, and it's not the $8,000 level. It's more in the 6,500 level. But what we do with these enrollment numbers, when we finish our October enrollment count, is we send those to OPI, who performs the calculation for us. So, they run that through the, it's a little more complicated than the budget amendment or the budget adoption that we do using the Mayfair's data when we adopt budgets. So, I could pull that data, but I don't think I could explain it very well.
I mean, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Couple of questions, Pat. I guess the first one would be, just to make it clear, A, we're getting more money for the more students that we have, but I want to make sure that our taxpayers know that they are not paying any more in taxes. It does not affect their tax bill. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Exactly.
Cool. And then, the other question was also regarding the numbers. I know our numbers, even our November numbers are up, and if my understanding is that typically we do these A and B counts three times a year?
Twice.
Oh, just twice September and...
February.
October and February. So, after February, if our numbers continue to go up, do we actually get more money for this year?
We don't.
This is our one-shot deal, and we can't predict that we're going to get more. I'm not suggesting that we flip numbers. I'm just wondering if trends are taken into account.
We do take trends into account, and the typical trend is that between the October count and the February count, there's a drop-off. And so, the October count is actually a better one for us to use for a budget amendment because it usually reflects a greater increase and an increase in students that's for the longer part of the year. So, for whatever reason, there's a small drop-off between October and February typically. Not always, but typically.
And finally, if I may, are we limited in where we can use these funds?
You are, but not by much, because the general operating, general fund is the primary operating fund of the district. And so, operations of the district really encompass and include just about everything. So...
Yeah. I mean, obviously, 90% of our budget is salary, and we're going to hopefully hire more teachers so that our numbers stay within where they need to be. Probably going to be majorities to salary, as with most of our money.
You know, it's not likely, only because, it's possible, but the part that will be allocated to salary will be, because there will be. But we'll provide a list of object codes on the budget resolution in December, which would delineate where we would likely see the funds going, and share that information with you. Really, for this year, aside from, as you mentioned, possible class size issues or additional staff, par educators, whatnot that we may have hired to address the increase in enrollment, our staffing is fairly in place. I mean, it's not, we make estimates, of course, when we adopt budgets in August, and it's a little different. But the big, the big change is not so much the numbers from August till now, but from last October until now. So, from 2017, when the count is used to calculate this budget, those numbers have changed significantly. And so, really, the HR office has pretty well lined out the staffing for the year.
Okay. Good. Appreciate it. Thanks for the explanation.
You bet. Thank you.
I would just add additionally, and it's been broached here, that one of the important things to note is that we will not... things to note is that we will not be increasing the burden on the taxpayer. But even beyond that, essentially, we're in a position where it, in the long term, provides a bit of relief to the taxpayers. We have had a history in the district of paying for snow removal and some O and M equipment, things like snow blowers and floor buffers and such, out of the building reserve. And as you know, the building reserves have expired. So, we've asked Burley to be extremely conservative with any carryover. So this budget amendment will allow us, this year, to do some things like pay for snow removal out of the general fund and to acquire some of that equipment that we might otherwise have had to go to the residual in the building reserve fund to acquire. And so, that will help us preserve some of that building reserve and hopefully stall the date at which we'll need to go out for an additional building reserve. So, again, we're trying to manage all these budgets in concert, but that's one of the effects. And as Pat referenced, we benefit this year because we have remittance coming from the TIF districts, which will be able to go into our reserves and essentially then fund this budget amendment. But Pat and I have had the conversation, and we'll come back in December with more broad discussion of the TIF remittance and just exactly how it will be applied, not only to reserves, but potential relief for some of the debt service obligations with regard to the bonds.
Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
Does the student increase include the four-year-olds?
It does for October, that's part of the enrollment count.
Right. So, one of the things that I know we had talked about earlier on in this year was the challenge of fully equipping and furnishing the classroom space, et cetera, for those kids, because we weren't actually getting their funding fully flowing into the district. We were using sort of some specialized, the specialized pulling-from-peter-to-pay-paul sort of processes that happened. And so, I know that as, there's about a million dollars kind of now available, which is very exciting, and I'm sure there are 12 places to put every single dollar. However, it does seem like it would make sense to move some of those things off of the wants list into the needs list for programs that have been newly started, to get those better equipped and better. That would, I guess I'm not asking a question, but.
But I would respond to the question you didn't ask, and that is, we did just approve some requisitions to acquire some furnishing and equipment and materials for the early kindergarten program specifically. And again, that was one of those things we held essentially in advance until we were comfortable that we would qualify for the budget amendment.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then as you see under 9A, there's a 1 and a 2. One is the resolution 2019-4E, which is the elementary amendment is to approve the attached resolution 2019-4E and petition for budget amendment at the elementary side in the amount of $476,768.20. And so, is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the attached resolution and petition for the budget amendment in that amount? Moved by trustee Decker? Is there any second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen? Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the attached resolution 2019-4E and the petition for the budget amendment in the amount stated in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees. And then, we move on to item number two, which is the parallel amendment proclamation, which is resolution 2019-5S. Is there anything, Pat, to point out, other than trustee Lorenzen's question about the different dollar amounts?
Just excited to be seeing a budget amendment in the high school.
Any other, any questions of either Mark or Pat? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the attached resolution 2019-5S and the petition for a budget amendment in the amount of $590, $590.56.86? Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Wake? Is there a seconded? Seconded by trustee Sturbeus? Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I just want to say one thing that I think, something that I hear over and over over the past couple of years, is how people don't know how decisions get made about what gets spent on. And I think this is a huge district, and it's really complicated, and I think that's going to be an eternal challenge, to make that transparent, and to make that process transparent, so that people have the sense that when they are wondering, is there money for XYZ, they know how to understand how that works. So I just want to say, thank you for taking the time to educate us as trustees around that. I know it's time-consuming, and you might feel sometimes like you're saying the same things a lot, but this stuff is extremely complicated, and I appreciate an ongoing commitment to trying to make this stuff transparent, so that it feels like a partnership all the way down the line. That's important. Thank you.
Any other trustee comments or discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached resolution 2019-5S and the petition for a budget amendment in the amount stated in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now, we move on to three, which is to approve an additional bus route. Burley, we need some, a bus?
Yeah, this is, so currently, right now, we have, and Karen and our Mark can jump in here, and you have some stats, too, but right now, we're running about, this will be the eighth bus. And we typically have, I think, all buses are mini buses with aids. These students have IEPs, mostly students have IEPs for transportation. We've worked very closely with Beach to, on extending routes that are current for K5 schools, using the mini buses to extend from their current route without having to create more routes. We can extend time, and it's really a huge cost savings to the district to do it that way. These students live all over the place geographically. It's not kind of like one neighborhood school, like typically we would see in a normal school. So we have to, we have to get out there and get these students in. So, we just basically really ran out of mini buses to make the times work where we can get kids to school in a reasonable time and not spend a whole bunch of time on the bus. So, that is why we're requesting this extra special, extra route.
I would just add one comment. The preschool is special, in that when students reach age three, we begin services immediately. So, it's not like other programs where August 27th, everybody who's going to attend that year commences attendance. So, we have students that are constantly transitioning, that increases the class size, but it also increases the transportation demand. And as Burley referenced, these students are three- to five-year-olds, and they ride in car seats, which is a little more labor-intensive as we load and unload buses. And we got to a point where just adding additional students to the bus increased route time, so some students would be on the bus as long as 45 minutes. And for a preschool student, that's just simply not acceptable. So, we met with Beach, we met with Terry and Burley, and looked at all the alternatives, and this was clearly the most responsive and most responsible way to approach it.
Any questions? I just have one question. If we're approving the bus route, does that mean a new bus also has to be approved or purchased? Sorry, wrong word.
No, they have enough buses, they would just utilize a different bus.
Okay.
But it's basically a new driver, a new bus, something that wouldn't be out and about, we could kind of piggyback on.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Trustee Kendall?
Noting that this is a special population, is there an extra adult in the, okay, besides the driver?
Yes, we do have aids on all those buses that transport preschool students.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the proposed new bus route, which has now been given the designation SE57? Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the proposed new bus route, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees. And then, we move on to another elementary action item, which is to approve the elementary class size reduction resolution. Whoops, sorry. I skipped over to two. I was all excited about elementary action items. So B1 is actually to approve the personnel report that we see on a regular basis. So Dave, is there anything about the report?
No.
Beginning of page 34?
It's a standard monthly report.
Okay. Any questions of Dave about the report? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report that's provided in the agenda? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Lorenzen? Is there any board discussion? We don't discuss individual items, but, or individuals, but is there any general discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report found in our packet, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now, we come on, come to approving elementary class size reduction resolution 2019-3E. And so, Dave, if you want to explain this, I had to read this paragraph a couple of times to try to figure out what's going on. I think I've got it.
We've been seeing this for quite a few years. Since 1999, we've been receiving monies through Title II Part A, which we utilize to reduce overall class sizes to enhance student achievement. OPI has indicated that it's best for us, as for the board, rather, to pass a resolution indicating that we're going to use those funds for class size reduction, and it is supplementing our budget, but not supplanting our general fund budget.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, then the recommendation is to approve resolution 2019-3E, which is regarding class size reduction initiative funds, and this is in early elementary school classes? Is that correct?
Yes, we're using for K2.
Okay. So, is there a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Kendall? Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker? Any board comment or discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of approving resolution 2019-3E regarding class size reduction initiative funds, initiative funds, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees. And then, we move on to approving secondary class reduction resolution 2019-4S. And Dave?
It serves the exact same purpose. We use it to reduce class sizes. This is actually used to fund three teachers, all of whom are employed at Willard.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just a little confused. I, the first sentence talked about that class size reduction was to help provide smaller classes in the elementary schools.
Correct.
There's also an opportunity for secondary.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2019-4S regarding the class size reduction initiative funds? Moved by trustee Smith, and is there a second? Seconded by trustee Kendall? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving resolution 2019-4S regarding class size reduction, and it would be primarily impacting Willard, as I understand? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then, we move on to a topic that we see on a regular basis annually, which is to approve incentive for early notification of retirement. And so, Dave, if you want to just remind us why we try to get this notice out early?
Yeah, first off, I would say it's really not an incentive, it's more of a stipend that we do, so we should correct that. For anybody gives us notification of their intent to retire in writing between now and February 28th, they get a five, they're eligible for a $500 stipend, the purpose of which is to allow us to make staffing decisions for the next year. In March and April, we run our arenas, and if we know what positions are going to be available, we can offer those in district to both qualified, classified staff and to MEA members as well.
Does any trustee, you have a question, trustee Smith? Okay.
Is this applicable to the superintendent?
I was actually thinking that, but I have not received anything in writing yet from the superintendent, and it has to take place on December 1st through February 28th.
So he may have jumped the gun.
We can talk.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to improve an incentive of $500 less appropriate deductions for early notification of retirement, which is received in the Human Resources Office no later than February 28th, 2019 at 4:00 p.m.? Moved by trustee Wake? Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Sturbeus? Is there any board discussion? I, one comment, you know, we've talked about in the past, it'd be kind of nice if we could up the incentive a little bit, because it's been pretty stagnant, but at this point, if it's getting the job done, then thank goodness for that.
Yeah, I was looking at our numbers, I think last year, we had 17 out of our 20 retirees and certified take advantage of it. So it does really, truly help or get some people to give us early notification, including the superintendent.
So, we have a second motion, and is there any public comment or any other board comments or discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving an incentive of $500 less appropriate deductions for early notification, as described in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And once again, we allow for public comment on non-agenda items for any member of the public who couldn't get here at the beginning of the meeting. We have not too many people here, but we have people over there, so I'll give it one more opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. And seeing no one walking to the podium, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Oops. Oh, sorry.